I don't know if it's gonna happen in the stadium, but it's counting. There are people down there. That's what he said. I'm seeing you all the way down the right. They're standing? I have five seats up there I need to sit at. Ready to come now for the night. Sorry.
So, you want to come up front and start? While you're doing that, because I've been going on the line.
I just said let's speak!
Remember, I'm non-objection. First of all, I'd like you all to remove your hats if you wear anyone and stand for us to say the closing. I'd like to read the following. "The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Welcome, everyone. I'm gonna start reading off the article from the law. To Frank Ross, resident in the town of Owlshead in the county of Knox. Greetings. In the name of the state's name, you are hereby required to notify the inhabitants of the town of Owlshead, qualified by law to vote on this town's affairs, to assemble at the Owlshead Community Builder on the 11th day of August 2025, at 6:00 PM to act upon the following articles. Article 1, to choose a moderator to preside over the meeting. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Jan Doyle.
Jan Doyle. Do I have a second or not?
One second.
Any more nominations?
Who nomination ceases?
Everyone that votes for Jan, please raise your hand. Anyone?
Good evening, thank you very much. I'm Jan. I will be your moderator since you just elected me. You just have to swear me in.
Yes.
Hi, Jan Doyle. You swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state so long as I shall continue as a citizen thereof. I, Jan Doyle, do swear that I will faithfully discharge, to the best of my abilities, the duties incumbent on me as moderator of this meeting according to the Constitution and the laws of the state. Get their Article 1s already done. The top of the moderator is, this is your town meeting. My goal tonight is to make sure we follow the law and accomplish it as efficiently and effectively as we can. And I'll do my best to do that. Before we begin, I think we've got some...
Every year, the select board picks someone or approve that we give the Spirit of America award to. And this year, I'd like to ask Lauren Swasbaw to come forward. I know she's here. I saw her. Spirit of America Resolution by the Select Board, Town of Owlshead Maine. The 2025 Owlshead Maine Spirit of America Foundation Frigroup honors Lauren Swasbaw for her commendable service to the Owlshead community, for her involvement on the airport committee, the conservation committee, and various town events, and working continuously to make our town a great place to live. Whereas Lauren has stepped forward to organize events such as the Pumpkin Walk, another happening that is enjoyed every year by our town folks. Whereas Lauren always does her homework to keep the select board on common form for situation and future plans involved in the airport and raises important concerns. Therefore, being resolved by the Select Board in the town of Owlshead in gratitude and sincere appreciation that Lauren Swasbaw is hereby recognized for her citizenship, leadership, and achievements in our community with the 2025 Owlshead Spirit of America Town Meeting Committee.
Okay, moving on. Article 2 is where we're gonna choose a select board member for a three-year term. That's gonna be by written ballot. So, you have to bear with us, ladies, I think you're gonna pass ballots off. Now, you can open it for nominations.
Yes, I nominate Russ Kraus. We're going on the select board.
Russ Kraus.
I nominate Jess Smith.
We need a second for this.
I have a second.
And a second.
Oh, sorry. Got excited.
Any further nominations?
Yes, I nominate Jess Smith.
Jess Smith. And a second. Any further nominations for select?
I nominate Greg McElroy.
Greg?
McElroy.
McElroy, I'm sorry.
And a second for Greg?
I have a second then.
Any further nominations?
Nomination ceases.
The nominations be closed. No objection with closed nominations. We have three. Russ Kraus, Jeff Smith, and Greg McElroy. Are your choices. Ballot should be...
Wait a second. Can they also say something about who they are?
I think that would be great. I would welcome that. Who would like to start? Russ, or you? That's fine. As long as you can be heard. Russ, you're welcome to come up here.
Hi, I'm Russ Kraus. My wife, Michelle, Lori, and I live at 56 North Shore Drive. I'm a geologist by training, although I worked in the computer technology industry before building a company that restored streams and weapons. This background means that I'm interested in Owlshead geology and our water. In the past couple of years, I've taught geology of Owlshead to 4th graders at the Ashboy Community School. I'm a member of the Conservation Commission, and I co-chair the comprehensive planning meeting for our town. I bring grants to help make our community more resilient. The first grant last year was for an EV charger, but after securing the funding, I had to recommend that the town not accept the money because of ongoing costs associated with the charger. Grants shouldn't cost us money. They should return our tax dollars that we pay to our community for our own benefit. That's why I'm excited about this year. We closed on a $44,000 grant that will be used to clean our fire ponds, which means our fire department has faster access to water, no additional costs to the town. I believe in community service and volunteerism. In addition to my part-time consulting work, I volunteer as business mentor of a score that supports small businesses across Maine. However you know me, know that my hope for our community is to build on rich traditions of our past so that we thrive and prosper in the future. Thank you.
Jeff, Jess Smith?
I'm Jeff Smith. I'm the resident of Owlshead since the day of 4. I served the town as special... A little before I was adopted. I've been with the town council all around 30, 40 years. I'm on Owlshead, South Thompson, Thompson, Salt Lake City. Also, I'm a very important unit. I don't have much else to say, really. I'm thankful to townspeople. I've worked in town my whole life. I get to vote.
And Greg McElroy? Greg? Please.
Uh, thank you for that nomination. Greg McElroy, 134 Bellevue Street. I'm from away. Although I've been in and around Owlshead since 1979, when my parents bought Ben and Nancy Chaplin's property off Crox Beach Road. We suffered there for many years, until they moved over to Bellevue Street, the house my sister now owns. Janet and I bought our home in 2011. Some of you may remember it was, um... Leonard's, whoops, and then, uh... Who has a court? Yeah, what happened? Yeah, Corey Douglas, I'm sorry. Anyway, we moved in full-time in 2020. Listen, many friends and neighbors in the audience, and I know many of you from some volunteering at the library. We had a really good year. I hope you get a chance to read our report on page 45. Some of you I know from the select board meetings and working on committees. Some of you may recognize me from working the ballot machines at the elections. I'm an unenrolled voter, so that's the one job Elmar can sign to me. It was fun, and I get to help people out now and then. I retired from a career in operations and human resources. Operations taught me how to anticipate issues, how to get things done efficiently. More importantly, operations taught me that if something's not broken, don't try to fix it. Not everything needs to be changed. Human resources taught me how to listen, how to ask questions, how to get as much information before making a decision. I care deeply about Owlshead. We're a year-round community, and I believe it's important to recognize and respect the families and traditions that have been placed here for generations. So, I understand we have a working waterfront. If you're gonna count the fishing vessels, if I outnumber these boats, ten's one. And worrying is in the harbor. I appreciate the firefighters, the town employees, and the volunteers who work to get things done, and value the businesses, big and small. I believe in whole rule, town meeting, the select board, or the government. I've gone on too long, I know already, but I just end by saying, you know, following... Linda is like following Bill Belichick. She'll choose and it's two fingers still. But if you choose to elect me tonight, I can commit to working closely with Pam and Mike, with the elected and officials, appointed officials, the very talented office staff, and most importantly, all of the citizens to continue to make Owlshead a very good place to live. Thank you.
Reminder of the three names.
Yes, I will. Reminder of the three names. You've got Russ Kraus, Jeff Smith, and Greg McElroy. Don't worry about spelling. I think we can figure that out. We can just stick with Russ, Jeff, and Greg. Do your best on that.
No, we're not going to, because this is ancient. There's so much work to do, and he wants to make sure it's correct. I think that we will meet him next Monday.
While we're passing ballots around, I just wanna cover some, what I would call administrative work. I know you've had moderators before. But just as a reminder, if there's no objection, you know, now that I'm elected, I'm gonna use the...
He's the moderator. We can't hear you because there's a lot of noise back here.
Okay. I'll do my best to speak up. Thank you. I'm gonna use the Maine Moderator's Manual 7th Edition as the guide for today's meeting. That shouldn't be any surprise. I think that's the same one we've used since 21 at least. And that's how we'll conduct the meeting in accordance with that manual. Reminder that communications during the meeting should all come through me as the moderator. If you wish to address the audience, if you have questions, please address them to me and not to each individual. Please be courteous to each other, your neighbors. Allow people to speak when they have the floor. Don't interrupt them. I'll get to you. I'll recognize you. You'll have your chance to speak, for sure. You can indicate that you want to speak by either raising your hand or standing, whatever you're comfortable with. If you would like to come to the microphone, please do. I'm afraid it's the only one. We are a big crowd tonight, so feel free to come forward. That's it. Well, have a good meeting. Just a reminder, you have to be a registered voter in Owlshead to vote. I don't know how many people in Herm are not registered voters. You should not have one of the... Three-by-five colored cards if you're not registered, and you should have one if you are registered. I know the ladies were checking people as they came in. What we'll do, you have to deliver, promote yourself, unless you're unable to come to the ballot box. And then, when we're done, we'll bring the ballot box to you. So, if we start in the back and have people come down the side, I think it might be, then go back to your seat to the middle aisle. So, we're ready in the back. I know you've got the ballots left. Come down the side. Come down two sides, and then we'll go back to your seat to the middle. See if we can do this without tripping over anything.
Now, but I'm not on board anymore. You will be Mr. Quexler.
Congratulations.
I must be knocking on your door.
All right.
Okay.
My kids with the top down, with the tripod around the whole town.
Let's kill that, right there.
Is there anyone who hasn't voted and wants the ballot box? Is there anyone who hasn't voted and wants the ballot box brought in? Yes, sir.
Can we move on to the next article while I'm coming?
That would be fine with me. All right. That could make sense because the next article has to do with the assessor and the overseer and choosing those. And I'm told traditionally in Owl City, the select board serves as the assessor and the overseer of the four. In addition, so I would welcome a motion that we take those two articles and put them together. And use the select board. All right. And a second? All in favor? Show your hands. All right, good. Then we'll take Article 3 and Article 4. Article 3, to choose three assessors for the ensuing year. Article 4, to choose three overseers of the four ensuing year.
I move the three select board members to share the oath of commission.
I will motion and a second that the three select board members serve in those roles. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Show your hands. Thank you. All opposed? Motion carries, so Articles 3 and 4. Article 5, is that we choose the road commissioner for the ensuing year. Do we have a nomination for road commissioner?
Second.
Say the name again, I'm sorry.
Bill Leven.
Bill Leven. I heard a second for it. Any further nominations for road commissioner? Hearing none, we'll close the polls. I don't think we need to do a secret ballot unless we'd like that. I would just ask for a show of hands for Bill Leven for road commissioner. Any opposed? Bill, you've got it. All right. Article 6, choose a member of the town council for a three-year term. Linda Post?
No.
Nominate Lynn Chaplin. She's on the air. She's been on the air. She does a good job.
You nominate Lynn Chaplin?
I do.
A second. I hear a second. Any further nominations for the town council for a three-year term? Hearing none. Okay. All in favor of Lynn Chaplin? Thank you.
Chaplin.
Chaplin. Lynn Chaplin. I'm sorry, do that one more time. Show your hands for Lynn. Any opposed? Then you've got it. Motion carries. All right. Choose a harbor master for the ensuing year. Article 7. Nominations for harbor master?
I nominate Todd Nichols.
Todd Nichols.
I'll second that.
And a second. Any further nominations, sir?
Nominate Ed Philbrook.
Ed Philbrook.
Adam.
Ed.
Adam.
Adam. I'll get it. Too many years applying health measures, I'm sorry. Any other nominations? All right. I have two nominations for harbor master. You want to do this open? Okay. Then let's- Wait for the counters.
Mr. Speaker? Should we ask those nominees to speak their-
You can. Yes, you sure can. Todd? Would you like to speak up? Yes.
Hi, I'm Todd. I've been a member of the community my whole life. Live on Ross Lane, and I'm a fourth-generation fisherman. And I feel I would be a good candidate for harbor master. I spent a lot of my time down there. Anytime anything's ever gone wrong in the past down there, I'm always on scene, one of the first. Love having you vote.
Adam Philbrook. Anyone like to speak on his behalf? Introduce him to the meeting. Sir?
My nominee nominated Adam, he's been a harbor master for a number of years. His family's been over in Owl City for a number of years, involved in fishing and waterfront. He is a Hyundai pilot, ship's pilot, and very well acquainted with Owl City. Waterfront issues, I think he would be a good candidate.
Thank you. Can everyone hear that? As soon as my cameras are ready, we'll go. Would you like to speak? Please. They'll be here, so I'll speak right into it.
I just wanted to say that I would like to thank Linda for the job that she has done. And that she has, it's very rewarding, but it's also a lot of work. It takes a big chunk out of your life, and I think it was wonderful for her to give us as much time as she has. So thank you, Linda, for all your work.
Caller just reminds me that if anyone needs water, there is water in the van. Can you come back to order, please? The votes have been tallied. Your new selectman is Russ Kraus. Very close.
Do we have the count, please?
Yes. Russ wins with 44 votes. Greg had 41. Jeff had 37. Okay, we have two nominations for harbor master now. So I'll ask for a vote. The first will be for Todd. Kindles?
Nichols.
Nichols. For Todd Nichols. So if you raise your hand for Todd, we'll get a count. Hold them up. All the ladies count. This is for Todd Nichols, for harbor master for the coming year.
You know, we missed one.
I didn't know I could vote for Linda.
Maybe it's a decided vote.
All right. Next vote will be for Adam Philbrook. Raise your hands up again, who's in the highest. I'd say that that's a- Adam Philbrook is your new harbor master. Todd, you had 41. Okay, before we move into the budget articles, Tom Hirsch, the budget chair, has asked to come forward and do a little tutorial, I think that you'd like.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, thank you all for coming out. There are a lot of other things you all could be doing on a beautiful evening like this, so it's wonderful to see you coming to support the town. There was a handout in the back that hopefully you all picked up. It summarizes everything very briefly. The town brought in revenue, as of the end of the fiscal year on June 30th, the town brought in $6.6 million of revenue. Eighty-six percent of that was from real estate and personal property taxes. We get a whopping 5% of it from the state. And of course, you know that we don't get a penny from the state for the school budget. Our expenditures were $6.4 million, so we came in about 3% under budget for the last fiscal year, which was a good performance. As of June 30th, we had outstanding taxes, unpaid taxes of over $200,000. Some of those have already been collected. Going forward, the new budget is summarized in yellow at the bottom of the sheet. We're looking at an 8% increase over the previous year's budget. Seventy-three percent of that increase is from RSU 13 and Knox County. RSU 13 again went up about two and a half times rate of inflation. Knox County went up more than three times the rate of inflation. So those two between them are responsible for 78% of our budget. And we have no control over either one of those. As far as what we can control, we are proposing giving a cost of living increase for town employees of 5%. We're trying to catch up on the time when inflation was running at 9% and we weren't able to do that. We weren't able to give it 9%. But we've now started to catch up in those years where inflation was running much higher than it is now. That basically is everything that I needed to say. If you have questions about individual items as we go through the warrant, that's the time to ask questions about those things. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Just a reminder that the budget articles are considered to have been moved and seconded when the select board put them forward to the budget committee, so we don't need motions on those. My intent is to read the total sum, unless there's questions and you want to get into the detail. Reminder that budget articles can only be reduced or eliminated, and we can't add to the budget. So any amendments to it would be to reduce or eliminate. All right. So Article 8, expenses. To see what sum of money the town would vote to appropriate for each of the general government activities. The total government general, I'm sorry, the total general government amount is $543,495. Is there any discussion on that? Yes, sir. Please feel free to come forward if you want.
Thank you, Henry. Dave Matthews, 41 W Street. I don't have any complaints about the budget, but I did notice a couple of significant increases, and I was hoping maybe the budget committee could zero in on a couple of them, whether on the general government. I noticed it was up $67,000 over last year's budget. I mean, it's a 14.14% increase, and I just wanted to take a big highlight of what's possibly happening.
Would you like to draw that?
Yeah. Three major pieces that go into that increase. One is the addition of our town administrator, which is a positive and a big plus for the town. It's helping a lot with the budget. We're also proposing a significant sum of money for IT improvements. Our IT systems are very vulnerable, and we need better equipment and better support for our information technology because of vulnerability. Another piece is the Family Leave Act, which came in through legislation at the state level. And that's something that the town has chosen to pay rather than putting one through the town in four years. So those are three of the main pieces that have added up to the increase. And plus, of course, the 5% bonus that I already mentioned.
That answer your question? Any further discussion on the article? Sir?
The assessor's agent, which is budgeted for $31,000. I don't recall that we've had an assessor's agent before, except for the evaluation.
We've always had an assessor's agent. That's not a new cost.
Well, that is not a new cost?
No.
We, well, we have, we have an assessor for-
Please, please direct your questions to me. Thank you.
The, the assessor's agent is different than the selectman's board assessors. And I don't recall having an assessor's agent being a specific item in the warrant. And in this particular case, because Maine has the reputation of having the highest personal property tax in the entire country, and that also gives up- and that also gives us the prestige of being third in the nation of the highest tax burden, with the exception of Hawaii and New York. And it's kind of our obligation to try and reduce our taxes as much as we can because there's a lot of people in this town...
Please read the article.
...for fixed income. Now, this particular assessor's agent is a trainee and is not qualified, according to the appraiser's qualification aboard, is not qualified to be an assessors' agent. Now, his father, who is Jim, or...
Point of order.
Yes, same.
Murphy Associates.
Yeah.
Who is...
Point of order, Jim.
Yes.
We're only taking up articles here and voting on money. We're not going off on these dumb rabbit holes for things like that. If I may, we've had an assessors' agent for years and years and years. Todd Edwards was assessors' agent, and then Amy. I don't remember her name. Don was assessors' agent, and now we have him.
We have memories.
We've had them for years.
And how many of them have been trainees?
I don't know that that's pertinent to the article.
That's nothing to do with that.
If it's not pertinent to the article, then... But the point is, he is not allowed to be an assessors' agent. His father could be, but he can't be. And there is no such thing as Murphy's appraisal.
We do have a contract with Murphy's appraisal.
No, you don't. There's no such thing.
The town... Point of order, we need... If you want to make an amendment to this amount, you can do that. But as Jen said, we're talking about this money. We're not going down the rabbit hole of all of that.
Select board and the budget committee have approved this assessor agent article in the article, the amount, so...
So we can... Can we make an adjustment to the thirty-one thousand?
You can move to reduce anything in this, in your budget.
I move to reduce it to zero.
Okay. I have a motion for the line item assessors' agent, which is currently thirty-one thousand, two hundred, to be reduced to zero. Do I have a second for that motion? Go ahead. And a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
Is this the point that... Is this the place or the time where we can discuss that?
Where you can discuss the amendment that your motion just did, which was to reduce the amount. So if it's pertinent to that, we can talk about it. If it's not, if it goes back to qualifications and things like that, that's not pertinent.
If that's not pertinent, then we can't do it.
Any further discussion on the amendment to the article? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand, of amending that line item to zero. All opposed? The amendment fails. So back to the article. Article eight, expenses. It's been moved and seconded. There's no further discussion. All in favor of Article eight? Five hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. Raise your hand. Okay, all opposed? Okay, Article eight carries. Article nine, public safety. To see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for the public safety activities. Total amount of public safety is three hundred and five thousand, one hundred and seventy-six. Again, that article is moved and seconded. Is there any discussion before? Yes?
We have these two amounts. This is the total public safety, three oh five, eight oh seven. I don't know what town that is.
Just three oh five, I think.
Well, that is the total, three oh five, eight oh seven.
Okay. That's what... Didn't I say that? I'm sorry.
No, no, you didn't.
I'm sorry. If I didn't say that. The total public safety amount is three hundred and five thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Eight oh seven.
Eight oh seven.
Okay. Not great. Scan by. All right. Correction. The total public safety is three hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars. So if you have this warrant sheet, it's got an error in it. That's the correct number. So again, it's been moved and seconded, the article, and I'm open for discussion. I have one back there.
Dave Matthews, forty-one, Delphi Street. I've got the same question I had before. We have an old piece in public safety. I'm using the sheet, so mine's going to be off by about eight hundred dollars. About forty-nine thousand dollars, which is about a nineteen percent increase. My observation also is that the majority of that is in the payroll line item of the fire department. It went up almost twenty thousand dollars, forty-three point eight five percent. I just wondered if we could just get a brief explanation as to what caused that.
Budget committee, we push it. Fire chief will address that. Chief?
Yes, so payroll is going up mainly because of forecasting, right? So we had a lot more hours than we would have, than we have had in the past, and it was budgeting. So this year's budget is based on accurate forecast, but we could actually see that the payroll on the fire department. Also, we increased the pay for our members from minimum wage. We brought them up to the normal standard for the hard work that they put in. Also, the deputy chief and assistant chief stipends, their annual stipends, went up as well because they take on quite a role in the department now that you've got a new chief and you have a full time job. So they got to step up and pull off the left. So it's mostly wage increase, stipend increases, and there's some forecasting increases.
You have to follow up?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Can you tell me what the increase was on the... You said there was an increase, but how much was that increase?
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, but the... They went up...
Does the budget committee have more fidelity on that number?
No.
No.
They went from a little fifteen dollars an hour to the normal... The first level went up to like sixteen, fifteen. Second level went up to seventeen, fifteen. And third level went up.
In regards to the forecasting, I'm curious as to whether there was a significant increase in the number of calls from last year, which made up what you called the budget last year, which would have caused an increase in your forecast.
Yes. Yeah, we went up twenty percent of call volume.
How long has that gone up?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I have a question. I have a question. In regards to public safety's heat, it says that they use forty-two hundred dollars worth of heat for the fire department, whereas the town office heat is only at twenty-four hundred. I would like to know, since we're open five, four days a week, five would run here now, what the difference is with the heat forecast?
Well, we've got a super old building. It's not insulated very well. The doors are there as well, the overhead doors, and there's some gaps in the doors because of the age of the building, settling and everything. Windows are old and rickety, and they let a lot of draft in. It's a big, open building. It's old and drafty. We keep it as low as we can, but we don't want for us to be going.
Can I have a follow-up to that? How often are you using the building compared to us using it this week?
We use it twice a month for drills and trainings, and then on and off in between the calls. We keep it at fifty-eight degrees.
Can I weigh in on that?
Yes, of course.
It's actually a reduction over last year of the line item for heat, which was seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-five. So I think they are making an effort.
Are you...
I mean, you can literally go in there one day and go in there the day after and see the level on the tank go down. So it sucks oil. It's got a great, huge furnace, and it's an old, drafty building from the nineteen sixties.
I continue. Is there further questions?
Yeah, just the moderator. I'm just going to say, we didn't hear the select board's comment.
I wasn't sure you did.
I was just noting that it was actually a reduction in budget from the previous year for heat. Like, the previous year, the line item was seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-five. So I think they're making a significant effort to keep it as low as they can, but as chief said, they're working with an old building and an old furnace and everything.
Can I just ask the follow-up? Do you know what was actually the amount used? I know you gave an approximate. How bad I know, but I'm sorry.
Chief, can you respond to that? Do you know the actual amount you used last year?
I don't know the actual total number here. Sixty-one hundred.
Thank you. Sixty-one hundred of everybody for that. All right, further questions? Article eight. Further discussion, I'm sorry. Hearing none. Article nine, public safety. Thank you. And I'm ready to vote. All in favor of the public safety? Total of three hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars. Raise your hands. Thank you. All opposed? All right. Article carries. Thank you. Article ten, public works. To see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for each of the following public works activities. Again, the total public works budget is six hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and ten. Is there any discussion on the public works budget? Hearing none. Let's vote. All in favor of the public works budget at six seventy-one, four ten? All opposed? Article ten carries. Article eleven, human services. See what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for human services. Total amount is ten thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Any discussion on the article? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. All in favor of the Article eleven, human services, at ten thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars? All opposed? Article eleven carries. Article twelve, miscellaneous. See what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for unclassified expenses. The amount is two hundred and fifty dollars. Any discussion on Article twelve? Hearing none. It's moved and seconded. All in favor of Article twelve at two hundred and fifty dollars? All opposed? Okay. Article twelve, miscellaneous carries. Article thirteen. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the following funds to reduce the town's twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-six tax commitment. The total amount is nine hundred, twenty-one thousand, three hundred and four dollars. Any discussion on Article thirteen? Hearing none. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of Article thirteen, nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, three oh four? All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Article thirteen. Article fourteen. Now we're back to, I mean, motions and seconds here. To see if the town will vote to raise the general property taxes, the amounts voted in the preceding Article eight through twelve inclusive to be reduced by the amounts voted in Article thirteen. We'll vote second. Second? Any discussion on Article fourteen? All in favor of Article fourteen? All opposed? Article fourteen carries. Article fifteen. To see if the town will vote to accept the categories of funds listed below as provided by the Maine State Legislature, state revenue sharing, education certification block grant, urban renewal initiative program, tree growth fund, park fee sharing, veterans exemption reimbursements, snowmobile registration, general assistance, library, and any and all kinds of property tax related. Article fifteen. It's moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. Moved and seconded. Article fifteen, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, Article fifteen carries. Article sixteen. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to negotiate and sign contracts as necessary for budgeted services. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of Article sixteen? All opposed? Article sixteen carries. Article seventeen. To see if the town will authorize the select board to transfer funds from the unexpended balances and surplus if necessary. We'll vote second. Seconded? Any discussion? Yes, sir. How much is that to be? I think it would... It's going to depend on unexpected funds and surplus. It would be determined. I mean, it's... As your budget year goes on, if I may, it'll determine whether you have unexpended funds in categories that...
How much was the last year? We have a question.
Do we have anything on the budget page? Question was, how much was moved last year by the select board from unexpended or surplus?
Very little. We did move some to pay for some assessments that, you know, had been negotiated of, you know, tax breaks or whatever, because things were over assessed. I don't, you know, I don't recall anything of any nature. It might have been fifty dollars here that was over budget, so we moved it from a line that was over. I mean, it was under budget, and it was a surplus. Bottom line's the same. It's just, you know, one category of the next, and we have the option to do that.
Any further discussion? Okay, Article seventeen, all in favor? All opposed? Okay. Motion carries, Article seventeen. Article eighteen. To see if the town will vote to appropriate up to two hundred thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance to be used to reduce the twenty-twenty-six tax commitment. We'll vote. Motion second? Any discussion on Article eighteen? Yes, ma'am?
I'd just like an explanation of what that means, an unassigned fund. What was that?
It's undesigned. It's what money we have left over, and it's... It's over the years, it's built up. I think there's well over a million dollars. Rodney, I think, may have exact amount from the auditors. It's about over a million dollars. The auditors recommend we keep, you know, undesigned. There's certain amount went, like, almost double that now.
Okay.
So we were hoping to, you know, maybe reduce the tax burden a little bit, especially this year.
Okay. I was just concerned because I know that there was some confusion about money's conservation commission. So that's not that firm?
No.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Article eighteen. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
I wonder if the same part, a number of months, people on that?
Yeah, there's a percentage of your local, your town budget. Rodney, I think, has the... Down here somewhere.
So our budget for this coming fiscal year is seven point one million. And the recommend... Recommendation should be ten to twelve percent of that amount should be in undesigned funds or unassigned funds, which the words are used interchangeably. At the end of last fiscal year, so June of twenty-four, we had one point eight million dollars in our savings account. Some of that money can't be spent. Someone donated money and said, spend the interest only to keep the principal. Some of that money is restricted to circum... Some of that money is restricted to certain things. So when you figure it all out, your unassigned money in that savings account at the end of last fiscal year was one point two million, giving us, you know, what, seventeen point five percent of our budget last year. So this year's fiscal budget hasn't been audited yet. Um, and there's some numbers that will change based on the articles that we're voting on. But the estimate is probably our, and it's a snapshot in time. So today, our budget, our savings account might have two million dollars in it. Tomorrow, we spend four hundred thousand on the school, we got one point six million in it. So every day goes up and down, and we collect tax money. So what they look at is just that number at the close of your fiscal year. So the prediction this year, we're gonna be twelve to thirteen percent, not seventeen point five, which gives us, the article is written, zero to two hundred thousand. So once we get those numbers audited and figured out, that will be how we decide what amount we can put towards, um, reducing the tax burden. So it's about as simple as it sounds.
What number do you have to reach to get two hundred thousand to be refunded for tax burden?
So the maximum of the article is two hundred thousand. Is there a, a level that you wanna reach to spend that full amount? I think that's the question. Well, you don't wanna go below the ten percent, so we obviously...
Right, yeah, right. Definitely, we'll, we'll go below the recommended ten, twelve percent. So, you know, if it, if it was my money at home, I'd probably keep it at twelve. If you guys are gonna be upset about your taxes going higher, I might go to ten. So that's kind of, we'll just have to make that decision.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a certain amount that, over the years, has consistently been in that fund? And if so, are we investing? Are we just putting it in the savings account? Or are we doing something better where, you know, easily very safe money markets can earn for it five percent?
Not sure that's pertinent to the article, but Budget Committee can quickly answer that.
Uh, the quick answer is where we can, but cash flow is pretty significant in this business where you're spending, you know, a big chunk every month. So it's hard to put it in a six-month CD or a twelve-month CD. Pretty much. We do have an account, it's, it's the account that the money is sitting in has a, a float account so that we, we don't lose our interest every time money ships back and forth from the checking.
So, thank you. In the backside?
Yes, I can call a question.
Call a question, okay? Article eighteen. The town will appropriate up to two hundred thousand. I don't believe we have to call, vote on calling the question. Unless there's objection.
Objection.
All right. There is objection. Thank you. We will go now. The motion has been to call a motion, which means stop discussion and vote. There's a second. All in favor, calling the question? Okay, all opposed? All right, it passes. We'll call the question, we'll go to vote. Article eighteen. Again, the town will vote to appropriate up to two hundred thousand from the unassigned fund balance. All in favor of article eighteen? Raise your hands. All opposed to article eighteen? Okay, article eighteen carries. Article nineteen. To see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to accept the payment of taxes not yet assessed. Moved, seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. It's been moved and seconded. Vote on article nineteen. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, article nineteen passes. Article twenty. To see if the town will vote without the following regarding collection of taxes. The first installment will become due and payable October sixth, twenty-twenty-five. Interest will be charged at seven and a half percent annually on all accounts unpaid after November third, twenty-twenty-five. The second installment will become due and payable March ninth, twenty-twenty-six. And interest will be charged at seven and a half percent on all accounts for the second installment unpaid after April sixth, twenty-twenty-six. Delinquents will be dealt with pursuant to the order signed by the select board on January fourth, twenty-ten. Seconded. Any discussion on that? All in, I'm sorry?
What is that select board, uh, decision of one, four, ten?
That was something that came out of the, out of the state, how we deal with delinquent taxes back in twenty-ten? I don't remember the exact wording, but it came down from the state on how we have to deal with delinquent taxes and, you know, who we can charge and whatever. I, I, I would like to make an amendment to that article. I would like to amend the seven and a half percent to five percent interest. I think seven and a half is, is, you know, it's too much, I guess. I was just thinking like that. I would, I would like to change the seven and a half percent to five percent for both, obviously, both, um, both the amounts that's due.
Okay. I have a motion to amend and a second. The amendment would change the seven point five percent on unpaid balances to five percent. Any discussion on that amendment? Yes, sir.
Linda, I'm only doing this for you. Um, I think that, uh, the seven and a half is probably appropriate as an incentive for people to pay their taxes. I think if you reduce it to five percent, um, some people might think that they can use their tax money to invest, earn more, and pay less, uh, interest on high rate of activity. So I have nothing.
Yes, sir.
Please tell me where I can get over five percent on my money.
Come see me afterwards.
Okay. Thank you. Stand by my amendment.
Further discussion on the amendment?
Can I just say something?
Yes.
The state allocs us a certain percentage every year, and in the past, it's always been that percentage that the state allocs for the towns to set as a maximum for the percentual. So that's the reason why that was chosen. There's no other reason other than that is the taxable, the highest taxable amount you can, percentage you can use through the state.
Did everyone hear that?
You can drop it. Everything in here can be dropped, it just cannot be raised.
You can't raise it above seven point five, but we can lower it. All right. So we're gonna go down the amendment. Amendment to article twenty, which would amend the seven point five percent, uh, charged to five percent. All in favor of the amendment? Please keep your hands up on the desk. Let me ask the council. Okay. All, all opposed to the amendment? Raise your hand. And please keep your hands up, I'm sorry. It's tiring out there. All right. The amendment passes. By fifty-three to fifty-one. Now we're back to the article. It's left to pass article twenty as amended. Article twenty now should read, the interest will be charged at five percent annually on all accounts for both payments. Any further discussion on article twenty? All in favor of article twenty as amended? All opposed? Article twenty as amended, carries. Article twenty-one. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board on behalf of the town to dispose of any real estate acquired by the town for non-payment of taxes thereof. On such terms as they may deem advisable, except for property tax acquired from certain senior low-income taxpayers who qualify for a special sales tax process required pursuant, I won't read down it, to execute quick claim deeds for such property. Property which in the opinion of the select board best serves the interests of the town by remaining town property need not be sold. I have a motion and a second? Second? Any discussion on article twenty-one? Seeing none. All in favor of article twenty-one? All opposed? Article twenty-one carries. Article twenty-two. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to sign quick claim property deeds for properties that the town does not claim as tax-acquired property and for which the town has no record of taxes being owed, but on which there are no discharge municipal tax leads. The purpose of said quick claim deed would be to clear the title only. I have a motion? And a second? Second? Any discussion on article twenty-two? Seeing none. All in favor of article twenty-two? Raise your hand. All opposed to article twenty-two? Article twenty-two carries. Article twenty-three. To see if the town will vote to accept and appropriate for the purposes of which they are received the proceeds of all grants made to the town during the town's fiscal year by the federal or state government, their agencies and authorities, and to see if the town will vote to authorize the municipal officers on behalf of the town to apply for such grants, provided that any necessary matching funds be appropriated by town meeting or that any substantive conditions other than standard grant conditions regarding spending only for the purpose which the grant is made, be approved by town meeting. Nondiscrimination, payment of prevailing wages, and similar administrative matters must also be approved and accepted by the town office. Motion and a second?
Second.
Any discussion of article twenty-three? Seeing none. All in favor of article twenty-three? Raise your hand. All opposed? Article twenty-three carries. Okay, article twenty-four. This is amendment of a zoning ordinance. This is, uh, not amendable, even though it's an amendment. You can't amend the amendments. And it's a yes or no vote. So do that. Is everyone aware of this amendment? Do I need to read it?
Yes.
Okay. It changes to the land use table on page thirteen of the ordinance. And I, I, I'm unable to, from here, to tell what changed, but I'll read this. Land uses, it has to do with accessory dwelling units each use. And who has authority over them? In this case, residential, one and two is the CEO. The overlay is the CEO. The resource protection, no. Commercial is the planning board. I'm not sure if any of that's changed or it's the same, but some of it changed somewhere. So ADU requirements. If property, lot is a single-family dwelling unit, a single accessory dwelling unit is allowed. B, no additional parking for the ADU is required. No additional lot size required. All dimensional requirements apply regarding setbacks height and lot coverage. All plumbing, water, and sewer laws apply. All shoreland requirements apply. All subdivision requirements apply. And both units must have common ownership. An accessory dwelling unit must meet the minimum size of one hundred and ninety square feet if the techno building codes and standards border article, uh, under title ten, section ninety-seven, twenty-two adopts a different minimum size. That standard applies and a maximum of eight hundred square feet or smaller than the primary structure, whichever is smaller. Under definitions, ADU, an accessory dwelling unit, smaller independent residential dwelling unit located on the same lot as a single-family dwelling. One accessory dwelling unit is allowed on existing lot within the existing dwelling unit, inside or attached to the existing unit, or as a new structure. The following minimum number of spaces shall be provided and maintained. This says accessory, accessory dwelling unit, no additional parking required. Okay, I have a move and seconded. Any discussion of, I landed, or...
This was defeated by us last year, it's coming up again. And it concerns me that it comes back up again because we already said no to it. Now it's spelled out very clearly as what it's all about. I'm a patriot. I love America. I love our town. And I believe that it is appropriate for this ending meeting to talk about the fact that this ADU is a wolf in sheep's clothing. It is passed by the governor, passed by the legislature, and over eighty towns have refused to follow it so far plus. It's designed, it's, it's a step toward government taking hold of our private property rights and telling us how to use our property. It is also a part of eventually taking away our private property rights altogether. It concerns me greatly that our town-elected board administrator and code enforcement officer, all of whom are consistently able to handle these affairs, should not be burdened with this kind of thing. They make the decisions for us, they've been very fair with us, they've helped us make appropriate decisions on our properties toward the concerns that we have. We don't need the state telling us what to do with our property. So ADU leaders in Portland have quoted in newspapers that are saying that it is selfish to own private property. That is not the American Constitution. That is not the Bill of Rights, and it is not what we believe in the commandment. It's what we know to be the right of our freedom, America. So I call you to vote no on this, uh, sheep, uh, wolf in sheep's clothing. Keep it out of our town. Over eighty-plus towns have not proved it. I'd like to save part of those eighty-plus towns so that we stay independent and free. We can trust our board to take care of our concerns. We can take our town administrator and our code enforcement officer to guide us in decisions that we have to make. Please do not accept this in our town. Stay free and keep our freedom, America, here. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am?
I just wanna say that I agree, and I think that the town should be able to take care of its own business. The state telling us what we need to do and I can't, how to do it. I think with our ordinance is fine, the way that it is, and this is kind of crazy wording, and all together. And it's be hard not to, um, work with it, just, for my experience.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Yes, I think we're all aware of what, uh, what was voted on last year here. It went back to the planning board, of which I am a member, and the zoning board, and to our CEO. We spent a year really researching this and... We spent a year really researching this and working on. And the major objection, what we learned from many of you and at public hearings, was that there was no limitation on the square footage of a home. If someone had a five-thousand-square-foot home, you could build another five-thousand-square-foot home. And that isn't what most people wanted. They wanted a limitation. So the basic change that we made this time was that the maximum that that second home could be is eight-hundred square feet, which gives you a pretty decent-sized accessory dwelling unit, accessory apartment, two-bedroom apartment, with a living room, a kitchen, a bathroom, and that's really the whole point of this. And Rodney, who is here, has done a lot of research on this with the state, and what we learned was that if we don't approve this and we don't put limitations on it, then anyone who could go to us and request it, an accessory dwelling unit with no limitations at all, and they will win in court. And so unless we have some control over this, we then have no control.
Well, I'd like to point out that what the ADU effectively does is it gives people the freedom to do something with their property that they don't currently have. So characterizing this as a loss of freedom is one-hundred percent inaccurate. This is giving us something that doesn't exist, where the state provided homeowner the ability to do something that we weren't allowed to do before. So how you can characterize this as a loss of freedom is beyond me.
In the back, sir.
There's a big issue, something with the comments.
I would stay pertinent to the amendment here.
Because pertinent to the amendment, I want a definition of what the law is.
Okay.
My case says both units must have common ownership. Does that mean the ownership between both units must be identical, or at least one person must be common to the ownership?
Common ownership means same name on both these. In this case, it's really the same lot. So what the law says, well, what we're saying is you can't have a property with a house, and then you're going to build an additional dwelling unit and sell it and run it like a condo. It has to remain your ownership, but you can rent it, you can do what you want to with it.
I'm just concerned.
And to kind of clarify what Susan was saying, if someone in the room was to apply for an ADU right tomorrow, I would deny it. Based on our current ordinance, we don't allow additional dwelling unit. In some cases, we currently allow two dwelling units in one dwelling. It's really a wopat choice of bunch of words, but if you dig into the ordinance, we allow a dwelling on a lot. And a dwelling can be one or two dwelling units. So we already comply a bit with the new law. The new law says, but that's in the same building. The new law says we have to allow it also separate from the existing building. So that's really the change we're making, and we, the thing that will help restrict it, if those people want to restrict the number of dwellings, is plumbing and septic. The current ordinance is we have setbacks, height, lot coverage, all shoreline zoning trump, bad word, all shoreline zoning takes precedence over the ADU law. So those would be applied. The fact that we're saying we have home rule and the state shouldn't tell us what to do, practically everything we're doing right now, the state tells us to do. The reason I have my position is because the state says you shall have a code enforcement officer. So to Susan's point, if we don't do something, you apply, I deny it, you go to the appeals board and say, "He denied me what the state says we're allowed to do." Appeals board would support my decision because they're supposed to follow our ordinance. They would go to court, and the court would say, "What the hell are you guys doing? You've got to use our law." They would remand that to me to give them a permit. And so until we do something, and the number eighty, there's eighty, eighty towns out of four-hundred-eight towns that apply for money. I misread that earlier today. And so the state can't really determine how many towns haven't done it, but from, you know, here today, there's probably ten to fifteen percent of the towns have not done anything yet, but that doesn't mean that they're not going to have to. So you guys, and I've been doing this for eighteen months, so I know a lot of questions and answers.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm not clear I understand all this. If I have a property that's an acre and a half, say, and I have a house on it, could I build a little eight-hundred-foot cottage to go beside it? All these years I thought with goodness...
To simpli, wow, this is a new law. To simplify it as best I can, the law is, the law is seven pages long. The summary of the law, which the municipal association gave to all the towns, is twenty pages long. When I read the summary, I was completely confused. When I read the law, it makes pretty good sense. It does discuss a lot of areas and zones that we do not have, growth zones, there's all sorts of other types of zoning that cities have and bigger municipalities. So we don't, it all boils down to if we allow a residence on a property, which our ordinance we call it dwelling, you must allow one additional dwelling unit. So what we're proposing is to adopt that state law basically with restrictions of eight-hundred square feet. So one of the things Susan was mentioning, if we don't do something, someone applies, they got a five-thousand-square-foot house, they've got plenty of land, they've got all the setbacks, all that, they can apply for four-thousand-nine-hundred-ninety-nine-square-foot ADU. And lacking anything that we've done, theoretically, the court would say, "Boom, you're approved, go get your permit." So I disagree with, the state can't tell us what to do. Do it every day.
Yes, sir.
Can it be used for short-term, like Airbnb?
I don't think that's pertinent to the question.
There's no restrictions on how we wrote the ordinance.
My recollection of the language last year in the article versus this year, this year's article cleans up that language, it takes out the questionable issues that were addressed last year. But I think the planning board and those who are involved did a good job on this this year. One more question to that?
So one thing I have to be this, you buy a house in a two-acre zoning or one and a half-acre zoning there, and somebody bought a house in their backyard out your back window, you have lost all that. You didn't think that was going to happen when you bought your house in an acre-and-a-half zone. So it's not like [inaudible] and people aren't that [inaudible]. You said you can't build, right now you can't build Airbnb's [inaudible]. That's what we're going to create here with this, and I think that we should just be aware of it. This one is, we put it in defeated more handily, you know, last year, so here it is not to get it, I don't think they're clear on standing. And totally respect our nearest [inaudible]. I think that's just his saying, in his opinion, if somebody's like [inaudible].
I understand this amendment, it allows the town to put in some of its restrictions, which the state law is not a threat. And if we do not do anything, I understand somewhere along the line, the state's going to force us to follow their [inaudible]. I'm not sure exactly if I got this right, but maybe the town CEO could have [inaudible]. But I'm sure if we don't do something, we're not going to have our ordinances which incorporated in this amendment, they might not be applied. I don't think so anyway.
With the way that this amendment is written, with the maximum square footage allowed, is the law written in such a way that if somebody wanted to do that five-thousand-square-foot house, they wouldn't be told, they wouldn't be given permission to do it by the state overriding this town max?
The state law allows municipalities seven or eight methods to restrict the growth of this. And what applies to us, the few that we could do, is you can limit the size. Even though some towns enacted a change in their ordinance, and they said the maximum allowed is one-hundred-and-ninety-one square feet. So the state says you have a minimum of one-hundred-and-ninety, you set the max. But the state also said no bigger than your existing home. So some towns did one-hundred-and-ninety-one, just because they wanted to restrict them. We picked eight-hundred as the committee that was changing the ordinance.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Right behind you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just would like to reemphasize what Rodney was saying about what will happen if this doesn't pass, and it's not to try to scare people or whatever, but it is absolutely a hundred percent true that if we don't pass this, and then someone comes in and applies for an ADU, there are no restrictions on the size of it. Yes, he can deny it initially, but then through the court process, which hello, will cost the taxpayers money, we will lose. We will absolutely lose. Additionally, the state has just passed another ADU law, which has some really aggressive language about how many units can be put on a property, and it would behoove us to have something in place to fight them or to light it.
All right, lots of discussion on that. Any further discussion on the Article twenty amendment? Okay, seeing none.
Can we just have a summary on that again, and just the size? And slightly [inaudible]. The maximum size is eight-hundred?
I think it's in your, it should be in your county's [inaudible]. But I can cover the, that seems to be the big question. An accessory dwelling unit must meet a minimum size of one-hundred-and-ninety square feet. If the technical building codes and standards board under Title X, Section ninety-seven twenty-two adopts a different minimum size, that standard applies. And a maximum of eight-hundred square feet or smaller than the primary structure, whichever is smaller.
All in question?
Any objection to call the question? Seeing none, I will move forward with the vote. This is Article twenty-four, the amendment to the ordinance titled zoning ordinance. All in favor of the amended ordinance? All opposed? I think we don't need a, it carries. Article twenty-four. Please come to order now. Almost done. "To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to place the proceeds of the sale of the grain chaw, forty-nine thousand, into a single reserve fund for the benefit of the buildings and infrastructure of the town of Owlshead to be expensed as necessary at the direction of the select board." Move and second. Any discussion of Article twenty-five? Yes, sir.
I have one question. Does this mean that the select board can authorize the use of those funds for privately-owned property?
No, I don't believe so. Just to add to that, about ten years ago, we voted at town meeting to set aside no more than, I think it was twenty thousand dollars each year to put in a reserve for replacement. I think it happened once. So we're trying to click catch-up here, so we can have some money if we need something really important in the town, like a new building, or some tragedy happens, and you know, we need to spend the funds for town needs.
I think the wording covers that. It does say industrial reserve fund for the benefit of the buildings and infrastructure of the town of Owlshead. That's how I read that. Any questions?
Could I have an amendment that says owned by the town of Owlshead? Not, because this language is [inaudible] in the town of Owlshead. I think that's maybe what.
Can you make that a vulnerable motion?
I would make that a vulnerable motion.
And a second. So there's a motion to amend Article twenty-five. I'm looking for the right place to put that wording. Into a single benefit, for the benefit of buildings and infrastructure owned by the town of Owlshead. Eliminate the word [inaudible]. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the amended?
Jan, I'd like to just add, if we do that, that means we can't buy any land if something comes out. Yeah, because it's already owned by someone else. So if something comes available, we want to preserve it for the town. And you know, there's some talk about various parcels and whatever. If you put this, it's currently owned by the town, and we can't do it.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment to Article twenty-five? All in favor of amending Article twenty-five to where it says, "Buildings and infrastructure owned by the town of Owlshead to be expensed as necessary." All in favor? Raise your hand. All opposed? Amendment does not carry. So back to Article twenty-five, has not amended. Any further discussion on Article twenty-five? Yes, sir.
Wouldn't the money be [inaudible] spent?
I don't, I don't read that.
The direction of the swat wood, as it reads, direction of the select board.
So short answer would be, no, select board make this. Any further discussion?
Is the building for sale? Is that lot for sale or is it sold?
Oh, the grain chaw? Yeah. So.
It's sold.
I'm going to [inaudible].
Is there a question?
Is there something else that that money could be used for?
I don't think there's any decision on what that money will be used for. Yeah?
Could be used. [Laughter]
Let's stay pertinent to the article. There's no further discussion. Article twenty-five, all in favor of Article twenty-five? Who's your? All opposed? The Article twenty-five carries. Article twenty-six, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to place previously appropriated funds, leftover held in reserve, from an account originally designated for the construction of the salt sand shed, balance as of six-thirty twenty-twenty-five was ten-thousand-five-hundred-fifty-eight dollars, into a reserve fund for the benefit of the buildings and infrastructure of the town of Owlshead to be expensed as necessary at the direction of the select board." Move and second. Discussion on Article twenty-six. Seeing none, all in favor of Article twenty-six? All opposed? Any ideas about it? Article twenty-six carries. Article twenty-seven, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to place previously appropriated funds, leftover held in an individual bank account, from an account originally designated for the construction of the Ingram Sewer Upgrade, balance of two-thousand-eight-hundred-eighty-two dollars and nine cents as of the thirtieth of June twenty-twenty-five, plus accrued interest as a date of transfer to the sewer savings account." Move and second. Discussion, Article twenty-seven. Seeing none, all in favor of Article twenty-seven? Raise your hand. All opposed? Article twenty-seven carries. Article twenty-eight, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to remove previously appropriated funds, leftover held in an individual bank account, from the account originally designated for property tax relief, a balance of six-thousand-sixty-three dollars and nine cents." for property tax relief, a balance of $6,063.44 as of June 30, 2025, plus accrued interest as of date of transfer, and apply to reduce property tax." Move and second. Discussion on Article 28. Seeing none, all in favor of Article 28? Raise your hand. All opposed? Article 29 carries. That completes the warrant.